Thank you. My little read in. We're gonna get started, thank you very much. Welcome, everyone, I appreciate everyone coming tonight. Tonight, we're going to... I'll have a couple of administrative things to talk about, but the very first is I'm gonna do my administrative role, as everybody's... many people who've gotten used to it. My name is Stephanie Phillips, I'm the chairman of the zoning commission. And, from the chairman, for the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on 614 and 621, 2017. These properties were duly posted on June 20th, 2017. Okay? And the only other thing to add to that is, I really appreciate if people could silence their phones, it just helps us all to hear better. We have enough trouble with the mic systems as it is. And if you do leave, just to talk in the hallway, 'cause it makes it, again, easier for us to hear, alright? Other than that, I really appreciate everybody's, you know, appreciation, and we'll make sure that everybody gets heard. There's a couple of changes in our agenda that we're going to do, so I can bring everybody up to date. It's gonna be a little bit of a shorter agenda. We had two items that are on our agenda. On our agenda, it's numbers one and two, a text amendment for the now entity, for 2152 Barnum Avenue, for now entity again. Both those properties have been continued, so I assume to the next meeting, possibly? Okay. So those two will not be heard tonight. Is anybody here for those two properties? We have two remaining properties, and with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion for 955 Ferry Boulevard to be taken out of order. Motion by Mr. Giuliano, second by Mr. Fuller? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Knott.
Good evening, Mrs. Pittman, Madam Chairlady, Madam Secretary, members of the commission, Mr. Hibansky. My name is Barry Knott, I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn, with offices at 1656 Main Street. I'm here this evening on behalf of UB Dockside LLC, which does business as the Dock Shopping Center. This time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing, and make reference to a folder of exhibits which I have just handed to each of you, to which I will be making reference during the course of my presentation. Now, this paperwork that you have in front of you probably looks familiar, because back in January, you approved a boat showroom in the same location, essentially the same boat showroom, except it was bigger, and the architectural facade was substantially different. And I'll get into that. But, to refresh your recollection, exhibit one, two, and three are photographs of the location within the Dock Shopping Center where this boat showroom is going to go. And as you drive in the driveway from Ferry Boulevard, at the bridge, and go down the ramp, this parking lot that you see in these three photos is to the right as you drive down the ramp into the parking lot. It's seldom if ever used, and this is the location to which... for which we are seeking approval for the boat showroom. Now, exhibit four is a rendering which was the building that you approved back in January. And this is a two-story, 10,000-square-foot building. What you see there is what was approved, and it was approved in a location in the parking lot, the photos which I just showed you. Now, however, since receiving that approval, my client has rethought the size, scope, and design of the boat showroom building. And if you look at exhibit five, which is a new architectural rendering showing a significantly more attractive one-story building of approximately 5,000 square feet, which has an outdoor deck overlooking the river. There was no outdoor deck overlooking the river, the first building. This building is much more attractive than the building that had previously been approved. Exhibit six is a copy of the site plan for the location of this building, as well as a copy of the architectural drawings. The most significant difference between that which was approved back in January and the one that you see before you in exhibit six, you can see from the first page of exhibit six, sheet A010, site plan, there is a large deck to the right of the building overlooking the river. That same deck is shown in the second page, sheet A1101. Eleven... one... excuse me, 110. Thank you. Thank you for not laughing at me, John. The third sheet is additional architecturals, and the fourth sheet are the architectural renderings which shows you the same building that is in exhibit number five. This is the new plan, the most significant change. This plan over that which was previously approved is this plan is one-story, this plan's got a large deck overlooking the river. Now, because we are modifying a previously approved building, this is an application for special case approval. The previous application was for special case approval. We can't change the details of a special case approval without coming back to you for a whole new public hearing all over again, which is why I'm here tonight. As you know, the location is commercial, it's a CAWF zone, which allows for retail sales and services, as well as water-dependent uses. Now, at this time, I want to introduce Scott Mitchell, who's the current tenant at the Boardwalk Marina, and he's gonna discuss briefly with you the format that he has envisioned for this boat showroom. Scott?
Good evening, and thank you all for hearing us tonight. We're pretty much staying with the same theory. I guess what's happened is engineering of foundations and piers and stuff that I really don't know about has made it cost prohibitive to keep that second story on the building. And we figured if we gotta come back here and redo everything, we might as well have remembered to enjoy the water, which is right outside the back door. So, again, no service, no maintenance in there, it is strictly a retail situation, and I think that's pretty much what we're sticking with.
Thank you, John. All right. At this time, I want to discuss the administrative comments. Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Public Works Department, and Community and Economic Development Department all had no comment. The Conservation Department, the Engineering Department, the Zoning Office, and the DEEP had issues regarding stormwater management, and with its attendant potential off-site drainage into this river. We have addressed the issues that were raised by the engineer, the DEEP, and Jay, and the Conservation Department in their comments, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Paul Linder, who is a licensed engineer from JMC Site Development Consultants in Armont, New York, who will address these stormwater issues. Paul?
Okay. Good evening, members of the board. Okay, so, we've recently received comments from the DEEP, which basically stated that there wasn't enough runoff being treated within the site development area, and that it was being piped to a location that it doesn't currently go to. So with that, we've revised our site plans, so that we are taking the full roof area and putting it into an enlarged rain garden, which will then treat the runoff, and discharge it to the same location the runoff in the area currently goes to. With that said, there is a small location west of the proposed building that does have a proposed drain inlet that will take the runoff and pipe it to an existing outfall, also on the House of Tonic River. Now, with all these site plan changes, there will only be... there will be a decrease in impervious area by a little over 1,000 square feet. And with that said, and the comments about the... from the town engineer and the conservation administrator, we feel like we can comply with those comments in our site plans.
Thank you. And just for the record, the plans that have been submitted to you tonight incorporate all those design changes to which you just made reference. In his comments, Jay once again reiterated the desirability of a building facade of high quality, pointed out that the new building will have a waterside deck overlooking the river. He points out that a concern from previous approvals was that no promotional signage like boats, watercraft, fish, et cetera, be mounted to the roof of or near the roof line of the building, and points out that on December 6th, 2016, this was mentioned as a specific condition of approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals when we had to appear before them for a couple of variances we needed. And we believe that this new building satisfies these concerns. And we also believe that it is a significantly more attractive building that will present itself to visitors at the gateway to Stratford as they come over to Washington Bridge into Stratford on Ferry Boulevard. Exhibit seven is a letter from the Waterfront and Harbor Management Commission to Jay, dated June 26th, 2017, and I did appear before the Waterfront Commission, and they say the following. "The Waterfront Commission first committed... considered a proposal for a new boat showroom on this property during its meeting on November 9th, 2016, at which time the Waterfront Commission found the applicant's proposal to be consistent with the harbor management plan with the understanding that the proposed project is intended to enhance the viability of an existing water-dependent use, the Boardwalk Marina, and will not adversely affect public access to the nearby public fishing pier and along the shoreline. The Waterfront Commission provided the following comments and recommendations. One, the design of the proposed building will reflect an appropriate nautical theme and be consistent with the town's gateway policy. Two, the Waterfront Commission supports best management practices for stormwater management, such as the rain garden proposed by the applicant to mitigate the adverse impacts of stormwater runoff. And the Waterfront Commission again considered this matter during its meeting on June 14th, 2017. Following a significant discussion with the applicant's representatives, the Waterfront Commission approved a motion to reiterate that the Waterfront Commission's previously provided comments and to find the proposal is consistent with the harbor management plan with the following conditions. One, it should be a stipulation of zoning approval that a specific number of parking spaces, as required by the original development approval, be provided for use by the general public utilizing the public access pier, and that those spaces should be provided immediately adjacent to the pier. And two, the applicant should be required to provide appropriate signage to identify the spaces required for public use and for customer parking." Now, what they're talking about there is not something that you would be... that your office would be familiar with. Way back when we got the restaurant approved, probably 15, 20 years ago maybe, I forget when the restaurant was first approved there, we went to the Harbor Management Commission at that time, and they approved the concept of a restaurant on the dock there with the understanding that some of the parking spaces up against the river, down by the bridge, half a dozen or so, were gonna be designated for public fishing. And designated as such. Now, whether that was done, whether those spaces were designated originally or not, I don't know. They would like to see that happen again, and we don't have a problem with that as a condition of approval of this application. So, as I indicated, Erstad Biddle is a substantial property taxpayer, and economic development issues become more and more prevalent. It is important to find the financial success of any town, state, or country. It's incumbent upon elected officials to present their respective community to their taxpayers in as favorable a light as possible. As far as the approval criteria set forth in section 20.2 of the zoning regulations, we comply in all respects. Two, section 20.2.1, special case criteria and objectives, we're in conformance with all requirements of the district in which it's located. This is a permitted use. The location, size, and intensity will be compatible in relation to the size of the property. We're talking about 5,000 square feet on a property that's dozens of acres in size, huge. And by the way, even with this new building, we have an extra 100 parking spaces that we don't even need to satisfy the zoning regulations. The proposed use shall be in conformance with the town plan of development. It is. The design will not increase traffic congestion. I mean, a 5,000-square-foot boat showroom's gonna generate very, very little traffic for this facility. The emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, or vibration will not be an issue, will not adversely affect tax valuation, will probably enhance tax evaluation, 'cause we've upgraded the building, and it will not create any fire or police hazards. For all those reasons, I would ask for your favorable consideration to this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm gonna ask the commissioners if they have any questions of the applicant. Ms. Peppin?
I have a few. So the deck and the bathroom, they're still gonna have a bathroom, am I correct?
There are two bathrooms with showers.
Shower, and a laundry room?
And a laundry room.
And all those will be used only by the people who have their boats in the...
I believe that's correct. Scott?
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. The only entrance is on the side here? Is that correct?
There's two entrances. Um, I don't know. I'm trying to... Wait, you're sorry? Um, so the way it works is you're gonna have one off of the porch.
Right.
And you're gonna have one on the side of the porch, or you come off the porch, you go to the side of the building, where you see the...
In the back, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's one in the very front of the building, probably, yeah, on the side over here.
Oh, okay. Okay. And so this is what's gonna face, like, the parking lot?
That is correct.
That is correct.
That's the parking lot.
And then the porch is around, and it's only around, like, up to here or something, right?
The porch is gonna be basically the building that's in the parking lot, it's just on that backside.
Backside, and then go around a little bit. Those are all the questions right now.
Good. Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just have a quick... this definitely is a much better aesthetically looking building, I think it fits much more in the character of what we would consider to be a boathouse. The question I have is just a change from the previous petition that the commission approved compared to this one, in regards to height. Now, you're taking one story off. I understand, you know, one story versus two story, but what is it in footage? Like, how tall is the building now relative to what was approved?
Well, I can tell you that the...
Same height, same height as the top.
So you're just having a larger ceiling effectively on the inside?
Right.
Okay.
And it conforms to the height limits in that zone.
Perfect. Are you gonna have any sort of... are you proposing any sort of signage? I remember we were very strict about, and BZI was very strict about signage, particularly facing the roadway of US 1 Ferry Boulevard.
Well, we're entitled to have wall signage on the building. Typically, the wall signage would be on the front of the building. However, our zoning regulations allow the applicant to have wall signage on all sides of the building, as long as the total wall signage doesn't exceed that which is allowed by the zoning regulations. So we're gonna evaluate where and the extent to which signage will fit on the building appropriately, and if it turns out we need to come back for some relief, we will do so, but otherwise, we're anticipating conforming to the signage regulations.
Perfect. And that's all the questions I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll go down. Mr. Giuliano?
Sure. How you doing? Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Attorney, Knott. Your engineer over there, so this is a... what is it? The storm year rating for this is, what, 100-year, 25, 40, 50? I mean, 40.
Oh, my God.
50?
We're talking for 25, 50, and 100.
So what is it gonna be? Right, it's all of that?
Right. It's...
It's up to 100. This will take, because that area turns into a duck pond in this weather.
Yes, so it does, 25, 50, and 100.
And the owner gentleman over here said you're gonna wind up doing pilings there now instead?
That is correct, right? You go to ponds and piers, or there's water change.
Excellent, all right. No, that's excellent, great, great move. And, I don't know, is there room for my trawler in there?
Sure, we can cut some...
That's all I have.
The town is a good... Got a cooler of beer in it. No, thank you, excellent.
Mr. Paul?
Yes. It looked like a great plan, especially you're downscaled and all. And, just to refresh my memory, what's gonna happen during the off-boating season, when it's wintertime at this premise?
We are gonna sell all the new boats we can to deliver when it is boating season. We will be open, and we will be, you know, there every day. So, as you may or may not know, we have a large amount of boats that stay in the water for the winter, so we're open. I mean, we're not as active as we are now, but we're open all year round.
And the other question is, you have another facility on the adjacent side of that whole parking lot, don't you, where there's boat sales going on?
Um, right now, we've moved everything to the trailer, which is right below where we're talking about building this. We used to have the... where the restaurant building is.
Right.
That's where the bathrooms and all that are housed now. And then if you go to the backside by Stop &amp; Shop, that's where we do all of our servicing, in that pen and storage area.
Right.
And the other thing that people might get confused with is, next to PJ's and where the Bank of America and all that was, we were in there, but now that's leased to another tenant.
Okay, so you're not in there. That's the question that I was going to, so you're not in there, so there won't be any traffic going back and forth between those two facilities?
When we're done, our goal is to have two things happen. All tickets, all interfacing with customers to happen in this new facility, and then the workers or mechanics and all that kinda stuff to be done on the other side, and that's pretty much gonna make it easier than where are they, 'cause it's a big place, as most of you know.
Okay. And it looks great, actually, when you're downscaled. The only concern I would have, again, it goes back to my colleague, Mr. Fuller's, comment regarding signage, 'cause I know we talked last time about some kinda signage on the roof, and you maintain the same elevation, so we're just making sure that we don't get carried away with signage in that area.
There's not gonna be any signage that does not comply with the zoning regulations.
Okay.
We will respect and follow that.
Okay. Looks good, though, thank you.
Mr. Peskis?
Yeah, just a couple questions. One, I assume that once this building's done, the trailer and the boats that are out there are not going to...
They're gonna all disappear and migrate over into that corner, yes, sir.
And then my other question is about parking, because as I look here, I see some spaces...
There are some, yes.
Okay, how do you get to those? Is there going to be another entrance out of...
If you're...
So this is as you're coming in off of...
So they're gonna reduce this from a normal curb to a... I forget if they call it a humble curb. What is that curb cut called?
Just a humble curb.
All right, so it's a drywall curb, and that's how you'd relate to that.
So there will be people, as they come around, coming down there, they might be turning sooner than they ordinarily do now.
That is correct.
Okay.
Again, if we see five people in a day, we're gonna...
Exactly.
In those spots down here, think of what everybody was talking about, the commission earlier, so, Waterfront.
All right, excellent, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. I'm hoping I don't have to bring out the big map, but I had two questions. One was, you talked about the rain garden, and I was trying to find it on the map. Now, I have the big map, but I was hoping you could find it on the little map, which would be easier than me opening this up.
That map is probably, the old map. Do you have the new map? If that was the map that we submitted, it's not on there. We... the revised plan.
Okay.
You see here, it's gonna be right in front of the ramp, it's gonna swoop down, be along that receding wall, and then we're doing a large curved island, and that's all the rain garden.
Now, that rain garden, the way you've designed it, is that gonna be, like, pebbles, and it's gonna be natural grass or something?
Yeah, it's a... there will be an engineering report regarding the rain garden. It'll have... it's all specific type of plantings. It's a few, like, foot-high plantings and a lot of grasses that just soak up water.
Okay, and it'll be maintained by the applicant, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
With everything else on the block there.
Okay.
We're gonna have to...
Okay. We'll do that, just after it's... The other two questions I have are much easier. The deck, is that deck just for your employees, or do you have any plans to use it for the public use at all?
I wouldn't say that we're gonna have a use for public. Obviously, we're gonna encourage interaction with the public. It's more for the Marina customers. You could say public, I guess, because of the rentals for the kayaks and the rentals for this, but we're not gonna go chasing anybody out either unless they're, you know, we want to interact with people.
Is it thought that you'll have barbecues or stuff like that?
It's just more casual. I mean, we don't really have a use, other than maybe people will come up on a Friday night and hang out, rather than everybody on boats when the gnats are out. Maybe we'll do a safe-water kayak thing with the Coast Guard Auxiliary. Maybe we'll... community kinda thing.
Got it. That's good. I should comment first. This design is far better than the first one.
I agree, thank you very much.
I like it much better. The cupola, is there anything other than aesthetics that is gonna be in the cupola? Lights, anything?
I think we have some lights and some fans in there, so to move the air. Here's the thing, we do not really use air conditioning in a 5,000-square-foot building with all these doors open.
Right.
So it does have a functional kinda purpose. There will be a light, and there will be a fan up there.
Okay, and there's no plans to put, at this point, signage or decoration on the roof directly?
Are you guys teasing me? Come on. You know I want to, but no, there is no plan.
Well, you can certainly bring it back as another...
Thank you, and we look forward to that. But, yeah, I mean, you know I want to, so...
Okay. I don't have any other further questions, Mr. Hibansky, anything? Anybody else have any others? Mr. Giuliano?
Just popped in my head, if it's... I know you said rentals, so on and so forth, so washdown of these units is gonna be in that parking lot? I would imagine you would wanna wash down something after coming out, and maybe going back to the engineer or something that's gonna be... it doesn't matter, it's all right where it's gonna be, as long as it gets into the rain garden or not?
Well, it's not even gonna go into the rain garden. All the boats get rinsed as they come on deck, and on deck is the Marina, which is watering every slip, so I... they're not bottom painted, they're not any of that stuff. It's just a plastic boat, so I don't...
So even if you wash something down inside the building, there must be a... no, you don't... wouldn't even do that, 'cause that's all new.
That's right, it goes to service. Service does all that, brings it up, it's nice and shiny, and...
It just stays there, okay.
That's right, and then when it gets too dusty, it goes back up and they wash it again.
Okay, yeah, I was just worried about some oils, you know, and...
Yeah.
Okay, nope, that's all, Madam Chair, for me.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we opened it up for public input. The first thing I'm gonna do is ask for people who are in favor of the application, anybody who wants to speak or comment in favor of the application. You may come forward now. If anybody would like to speak against the application, opposed to it, or just have a comment for anything on this application, would you... you could come forward now at this time? Okay, so, seeing that there isn't any comments, Mr. Knott, do you have any last comment? Otherwise, I'm gonna ask for a motion. Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close.
Make a motion to close.
Motion by Ms. Peppin, second by Mr. Giuliano, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, I didn't... Hmm? Oh, it's mine. Okay, I didn't... We didn't read that one into the record, did we? I'm thinking, no, but that's all right. Mr. Paul? I forgot to read the first one in like we formally do into the record, so do you wanna take this one and read it formally into the record?
Number three?
Yes.
For... for this stage?
Who'll give him a minute? This one goes back. This one, put away. I got enough stuff here. Is this... Yeah, you just gave this to us. Ready?
I'm ready. 382 Ferry Boulevard, Petition of Rolling Thunder LLC, seeking special case approval to construct the 119 resident apartments in an IRS-4 CA zone and TOD overlay zone. A coastal site plan review and an erosion and sediment control application is required.
Thank you very much. Mr. Knott?
Good evening, Madam Chairlady, Mrs. Pittman, Madam Secretary, members of the commission, Mr. Hibansky. My name is Barry Knott, I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn, with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. at 1656 Main Street, Stratford, and I represent Rolling Thunder Roman numeral 2 LLC, contract purchaser of property at 382 Ferry Boulevard from Norma Barry of West Hartford, Connecticut. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and make reference to a folder of exhibits and photographs to which I'll be making reference during the course of my presentation. The first seven of which are photos of the site at 382 Ferry Boulevard. Now, all of you are quite familiar with this site, because I stood here before to get a AAA truck terminal approved, which the court did not like, and we were here at the end of last year for a TOD application for apartments on this site, which was denied without prejudice, so I'll get into that in a minute. This is the site on the corner of Willow Street and Ferry Boulevard. Exhibit one is a photo of the old Quonset hut. Exhibit two, the vacant land. Exhibit three, the gas station across Willow Street. Exhibit four, the commercial light industrial property across Ferry Boulevard. Exhibit five, same thing. Exhibit six, the commercial property to the east. And exhibit seven, apartment houses also to the east. You're all very familiar with the site. This is the petition for special case approval under section 7.10 point parentheses 5 and 20 of the zoning regulations in order to construct a 119-unit residential apartment complex on property located in a CA and RS4 district. The zone line runs diagonally through the property approximately 350 feet back from Ferry Boulevard. The first 350 feet from Ferry Boulevard is commercial, the last X number of feet is residential. A coastal site plan review of this petition is required in accordance with the Coastal Management Act, and an application for such a review has been submitted with the special case application. Exhibit eight is a global view of the location from the assessor's maps, upon which I've highlighted in yellow the subject premises, which consist of slightly less than 2.5 acres. You can see that it runs along the corner of Willow and Ferry, and then it's an L-shaped parcel, and it runs deeply into the back piece. The property consists of 108,388 square feet, or 2.49 acres. It has 272 feet of frontage on Ferry Boulevard, 282 feet of frontage on Willow Street. The site is mostly vacant land, with the exception of the old Quonset hut-type building located near the corner of Ferry and Willow, which years ago had been a hot dog stand, and more recently had been a storage lot for landscape vehicles. As I indicated, the first 350 feet back from Ferry Boulevard is Zone CA. Beyond that CA zone, the balance is Zone RS4, single-family residential. As I indicated, this is the same property which was approved for AAA in April of 2015, and it was the same property which was denied in March of 2019 without prejudice for a TOD apartment complex. At that time, the Commission felt that the height of the two buildings to the rear, this was a three-building proposal, if you recall, one building, Building A out on Ferry Boulevard, and then Buildings B and C to the rear of the property. And you felt that the buildings to the rear of the site were too high in relation to the residential homes, which are approximately two and a half stories, that surround that rear portion of the property on Homestead Avenue and Willow Street. The Commission also wanted to see commercial use on the first floor of the building on Ferry Boulevard in Building A, in order to take advantage of the mixed-use policy of the TOD regulation. As you all know, this property has been vacant for decades. And finally, the Commission wanted to see some dialogue between the applicant and the neighbors, as far as a discussion of how the application could be improved to ameliorate some of the concerns that have been raised by the neighbors and mitigate some of their concerns. That has been done, I'll get into that a little more in a moment. Exhibit nine is a copy of the proposed plans of the new facility, the color rendering of which is the same color rendering that we submitted to you the last time. And the reason I point that out to you is that rendering represents a four-story building on Ferry Boulevard. We are proposing a five-story building on Ferry Boulevard. The only difference between this rendering and the ultimate rendering that will reflect the exterior of the building is that there will be an additional floor, should this application be approved. The plans, which are attached, show 119 units, of which 115 are one-bedrooms and four are efficiencies. There's also 1,248 square feet of commercial space on the first floor of the building on Ferry Boulevard. What we did was eliminate the top floor of the two buildings in the back, and brought them down to a garage under plus two stories on top of that, for a total of three stories, where they were four before. And we lost a significant number of units by doing that, some of which we were able to get back by adding the fifth floor onto the building that fronts on Ferry Boulevard. So, we've gone from 133 units to 119 units. We were not able to recoup all of the units that we had previously sought, but we were able to get some of them back by adding the top floor to Ferry Boulevard. Now, there are 140 parking spaces shown on this site. That is 17 spaces more than we are required to have under the zoning regulations for TOD apartments, plus the commercial space, 1,248 square feet of commercial space in the building. And the curb cuts in parking areas have been aligned, whereby there is proposed only one curb cut on Willow Avenue and one curb cut on Ferry Boulevard, as opposed to the two curb cuts on each street, which currently exist. Now, as far as our proposed use of the RS4 zone property, as well as the CA zone property, as you can see from the site plan, SP1, the zone line dividing the property between RS4 and CA runs diagonally across the rear 25% of the property back from Ferry Boulevard. However, this dual-zone designation is not an impediment to approval of this use, as residence apartments under the TOD regulation are permitted in both CA and residential zones. So, we're talking about a permitted use here in both zones, commercial and residential. At this time, I want to introduce Pat Rose of Rose Tizzo, architects, surveyors, and engineers who prepared the plans, which are the subject of this application, and reflected in Exhibit nine, who will take you through the site plan, lighting plan, landscaping, and architectural elevations, and explain how the site will work. Pat?
Good evening, Patrick Rose from Rose Tizzo &amp; Company, licensed architect in the state of Connecticut. So, the project before us is 119 units now, in three separate buildings, a five-story building along Ferry Boulevard, and two three-story buildings, which are two stories of units and parking underneath in the rear and on the side, eastern side of the property. What we've done is a breakdown for the number of units in each of those buildings. There are 67 units proposed for the five-story building on Ferry Boulevard. There are 28 units in this two-story portion to the rear, and 24 units in this two-story portion to the rear. So, it comes to 119 units, there are 115 one-bedrooms, and four efficiencies. One-bedrooms range from 680 square feet to 860 square feet, and the efficiencies are about 400 square feet. Fairly standard-sized apartments for what we're seeing in development currently. We meet all of the density, the density associated with the site is actually 135 bedrooms, we're proposing 119. Building coverage, allowed at 40%, we are at 33%. Impervious, 85%, we are at 71%. And open space being 15%, we are at 28%. Also, we meet all of the setbacks, front 10-foot, rear 25-foot, and the size of 10-foot. So, we meet all of those regulations associated with the TOD. One of the things that, in changing the project, is we've gone to a five-story building. Regulations normally would be 45 feet under the TOD, but the zoning commission has the impetus to make a change, they can up to 55 feet. And now, we are proposing, this building is proposed to be 54 feet tall. The two other buildings, which are similar in mass, are 37 feet tall. To give you the scale of that as to a close building, the apartment building on the corner of Ferry and Homestead is 36.1 feet tall. And house at the 30 Homestead is 30.5 feet tall, which is this lot right here. And most of the houses along Homestead are similar, similar height. With the 119 units and the 1,248 square feet of retail, which is on the first floor in this corner, we are proposing 140 parking spaces. 140 parking spaces, 17 more than are required by the TOD regulation of the 123. Couple, in the discussions with the neighbors, a couple of things came out of that. We've changed all of the fir and pine trees that are shown on the site from seven feet to 15 feet tall, and we've added a note associated with this side of the property that owner to add trees with the approval of the adjacent property owners along this side over here. That's something to happen after the fact, but there has been discussions with that. Through the buildings. Building A, first floor, design grade, Ferry Boulevard's on this side, we have this retail space here of 1,248 square feet. This is the tower in the corner with the exit stair, and then there are 11 units on this floor besides the retail space. The typical four floors above that have 14 units, and all of them are one-bedrooms, except for the center unit here around the elevator, which is inefficient.
Mr. Rose, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
Yeah, I hear you, sorry.
I'm kind of wondering if your mic is working.
Seriously.
Yeah, it's on. Yeah, just speak up to the mic.
No problem.
We're struggling.
Not a problem at all.
It doesn't sound like it's on, does it? No.
Building B, we have the lower level, which is all parking, except for the lobby, elevator, and two exit stairs. And then above that, we have two typical floors of 14 units, each of them being one-bedrooms. So, you have two floors above parking in Building B. Same thing in Building C. You have parking, elevator, lobby, stair and stair on either end on the ground floor. And above that, you have a typical level of two floors of 12 units, one-bedroom units. Fairly straightforward. Go quickly through the elevations. The rendering we did previously shows it better, I know, but we have a variety of materials that we've used, brick, siding, shakes, and stone at the bottom. And we articulated the architecture with bay windows, pop-out windows with little metal roofs above them, and then bay windows, and then another pop-out and bay. So, we let this facade go in and out as it faces Ferry Boulevard. On the backside, we've done a similar type facade side, which faces on the corner of Willow. We've got this tower, which is an exit out of the building, and also an entrance, you could enter there, get into the corridor system to the elevator and go up. But that's really becomes the connection point associated with crossing the street and going to downtown. Building B, we have the parking below, stone is being used at each of the lobbies, the lobby and the stairs. Above that, we have stone at the center, brick on these gables, shingles above, and then clappard below with these bay windows in each one of the units. Again, this is 37 feet tall to the highest point. All those numbers, they give you to the highest point, even of the existing structures. And Building C, similar, stone on the lower portions, lobby and stairs, brick at these gables, shingles, and then a shake above that, and then brick on the ends where the stairways are. And again, in the front, as it faces the interior, where inside the site, we have these bay windows. Fairly straightforward. That's pretty much deals with the architecture.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Emmanuel Silva, a licensed engineer, also from Rose Tizzo, who will address issues raised by the town engineer in his administrative comments, as well as those of the conservation administrator in her comments. Manny?
Good evening, my name is Manny Silva from Rose Tizzo &amp; Company, civil engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. Good evening. Summer, at least. So, what I'm going to go over here real quickly is, since the Commission has pretty much seen this once before, I'm going to go over the site plan on SP1, which you can see here, the colored version, or there's a black and white version. Essentially, we tried to create some elements along the Ferry Boulevard here with some benches, some cut-ins, kind of a nice streetscape. Also, we have a kind of a half-moon here to kind of accent the hexagon tower that's coming up from the building. We also have, as you're coming into this parking field to the north, some benches and grills here for recreational space. We also have a covered, here in this area, a covered bike rack. We have three of them, one for Building A here, Building B is right here, right near the entrance, and then Building C is back here. As you can see, we tried to, as the neighbors requested, we tried to create a screen of trees around the, especially Buildings B and C, and then we had, with some Austrian pines and fir trees. And then along the street, we used some taller shade trees, so that it kind of shades the sidewalk and those bench areas that we have there. I'll go right to the, let's see, the site plan here, the regular black and white one. As you can see here, we have our retail space here, fronting on Ferry Boulevard. We have another secondary access driveway here on Willow Avenue, which has access to one of our dumpster enclosures, and then as you go around the corner, you have two more. And here, in this island here, we actually have some benches circulating a fire pit. It's kind of in the middle of the, in between A and B. And we also have another, actually a third refuge, fourth refuge enclosure here with access straight from the northerly driveway. So, one thing that's important, especially in an area like this, is stormwater. SP2 is our grading, bless you, is our grading and utility plan. So, what we have here is essentially a treatment train, so we try to do primary treatment to treat the water, scrub it out with either a natural cause, natural methods like rain gardens and things of that nature. So, we have a large rain garden here in between, adjacent to Buildings B and C, so that surface water goes into the rain garden, it goes into some wetland-type plantings that actually absorb nutrients out of the rain, out of that rainwater. And then has a catch basin in the middle, which is raised a little bit, so that water is allowed to infiltrate into the ground, and then as the storms increase after that first flush, it'll bypass into that basin. And from there, it goes to either one of two underground storage galleries. So, as you can see, in this case, the overflow for the rain garden comes into this system here to the south. From there, there's a secondary treatment, which is a swirl concentrator, it's like a vortex, it's actually a vortex unit, and what that does is actually... And what that does is actually slows down the water by swirling it, and it drops all the sediment into that unit. And then, any floatables like bottles or paper or anything like that would actually, or oil, will get stuck in that unit also. So, what we have here is what the DEP would like to see going on, going in the future, is a treatment train. We have a primary treatment with the rain garden, and then, we have a secondary treatment with the actual mechanical unit prior to the galleries. And then, furthermore, as that water goes into the galleries, it would also be allowed to infiltrate into the ground, back into the water table where it belongs, and not down into the downstream, into the Stratford system and out into the, into the rivers. So, what we did is actually, we have a primary secondary treatment, and then, we actually have somewhat of another primary treatment, which is the gallery system, which allows that water to filter into the ground and then back into the water table, and recharges the water table with clean water versus just sending it off downstream. One thing that's unique about this project, we don't connect to the Stratford, directly connect to the Stratford stormwater sewer system. We contain everything onsite. So, how we attained that was we did design based on a volume calculation versus a rate calculation. So, normally, you would see a control structure, which let out water slowly, and then, as that, the increase in water comes up, it backs up into a storage facility, and then that meters out slowly. In this case, we have no metering. So, basically, we increased the size of our volume so that we hold the entire volume up to the twenty-five-year storm. So, in the smaller storm events like the two, ten, there's essentially no discharge into the Stratford system. It's a hundred percent reduction. And so, and at twenty-five-year storm, we have zero net increase in runoff. So, we actually hold all the stormwater. There's no connection to the outside. So, essentially, our sewer connections are, there's two sewer connections on Willow Street, one coming off directly from building A, and then, B and C is connected through another pipe to here. The town engineer estimates that the WPCA will require some manholes, new manholes out on Willow Street, and we accommodate that.
We couldn't hear you. Will or will not?
The town engineer estimated that, or anticipates that the WPCA will require us to put two new manholes.
Two new ones?
Correct. At the connection in Willow Street, and we have no issue with that if the WPCA would require, wants to require that. So, again, we have no increase in runoff. We increased the water quality from the existing condition because currently, all the water on the site and in the impervious areas just flows right into Ferry Boulevard uncontrolled. So, any kind of sand, oil, grit, things of that nature just go right into the Ferry Boulevard drainage system, and then, out into the Houstonic and Long Island Sound. From our proposal, we'll increase the water quality because we have our treatment train, and we actually won't be discharging any water to Ferry Boulevard at all. We'll actually be holding that all onsite and trying to infiltrate that into the groundwater. As you can see here, we also have our planting plan for the rain garden. It's going to be kind of berry bushes and some meadow grasses. It'll be in a configuration, like basically a depressed area. It'll look like a, like a nice landscaped area. But what it is, is actually, it's a functional landscape area where water is allowed to come off the pavement, over the grass, into that landscape area. And actually, the plants that we select are specific to water quality planting, so that they're, they're plants that uptake heavy metals and nutrients, and actually help break down oils and things of that nature. We also have our maintenance plan here for the rain garden system, and then, our maintenance plan for the, for the secondary treatment, which is the downstream defenders and the galleries here. And SP three is basically our soil erosion control plan. We establish an envelope around the site of silt fence so that no siltated, or silted runoff leaves the site. Everything stays on the site. If it's raining during construction, that water will hit that fence. It will only let water come through and not any silt, any silt or dirt. We also have an anti-tracking pad at our entrance, and the reason for that is to have these big stones basically riprap, so as the trucks are leaving, all the dirt and things off, on the wheels that are stuck to the wheels will get knocked off here at the tracking pad instead of putting it out into Ferry Boulevard. We also have some silt sacks proposed for the catch basins, and that's basically another piece of silt fence that goes inside the grate of the catch basin, so that during construction, if any water's getting into the, the catch basins, any dirt, debris that would go in get caught by the sack and not go into the actual system and compromise the system and have it not work as it would intend it as new. So, once the area stabilized, paved, and planted, we pull those sacks out. All that material and dirt comes out, and the catch basin itself and all the galleries are clean as if they were installed new. I'm just going to go. And then, we have the landscaping plan, our ornamental landscape plan, which is basically, as you can see here, we have two rows staggered of evergreen-type plantings going around the site here. We also have our, basically our shade trees. Our details, this is our, this is our, how our lighting is going to look. So, it's basically a light that comes down. It doesn't shine up. It's a small, it's a kind of a contemporary colonial, I want to say. It's almost trying to be an acorn, but it's not very modern-looking. And that's LED, so it's low-power, low-consumption, and it will shine down and not, and it's night sky compliant, so. Here's our detail, the silt sack. And then, basically, our dumpster enclosures, our connections, things of that nature for the engineering. Do you want me to go over the responses?
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'll hand out my responses. I know Barry wants to agree up, so I will. I'll just submit this, but if I, if I missed, if I forget to submit something to the record, then it'll kill me. So, Jay Haban, the, the engineering department had some comments. Some of them are kind of just basically reminding us that we have to do things after our approvals if we get them. A is basically to pull an encroachment permit after, which is required for a project like this, we, and we will, as soon as we have a zoning permit, we can apply for a encroachment permit with the DOT. Again, B is very similar. CTO application should be filed after a zoning approval has been obtained, and we concur. The pedestrian crossing route, train station should be revised as a TOD development, should be, should be discussed. So, he's saying there should have a discussion if, if there's any requirements for, or if the zoning board wants to look at what the pedestrian access to the train station is, and if there's any modifications off-site, not onsite, off-site. He's, the next one is, the amount of impervious coverage under the existing condition should be calculated. Well, this might be something that we recycled from last time. So, the, as I said, the impervious area for the existing is point, or half an acre versus what the proposed condition is, it was an acre point six. The existing condition, right now, discharges about twenty thousand feet, twenty thousand cubic feet of water, uncontrolled onto Ferry Boulevard. The proposed condition generates about thirty-four thousand, which requires us to put in fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty-four cubic feet of storage volume. So, basically, we're creating a volume of storage for fourteen thousand cubic feet of water, so that net increase doesn't leave the site. It stays, that fourteen thousand cubic feet of water stays on the site, even if it's a two-year storm, which only generates something like two thousand cubic feet. That whole store, that whole volume gets, stays on our site. The gallery should be H-20. Again, on SP two, it was noted that all the galleries be H-20. Test bits and perks shall be performed prior to billing permit application on the second one. So, basically, he just wants us to verify that, that the soil can absorb the water that we're putting into it. So, we had, here, it's a pretty sandy material. There's some rock in the area, but where we're proposing the galleries, there were some borings done, and it's a pretty sandy material. So, we, we'll definitely confirm that with the engineering department. And then, he asked for maintenance notes on the vortex units. Again, that was on SP two. The grading in the northeast corner, I think this was something that was in a previous revision, and then, when we submitted this time around, we actually picked it up. So, there's an area here in the corner with, right now, everybody just, everything's just drains in this back pocket. There's a depression back there. It's a kind of a hole. So, since we're building this here, his concern is that water will get trapped back, back there. So, what we did was we added a catch basin basically at the lowest point, and then, we'll bring that into our system, clean up that water, and then, try to, and we'll infiltrate it in the stormwater gallery system. So, right now, the water kind of goes into a pocket and just absorbs into the ground. So, what we're going to do is collect it and then absorb it in the ground with our gallery system instead of just leaving a pool of water back there. So, we'll just drain it out. Approvals will be required for connections. Yep. And we concur, any WPCA application will be applied for, and any charges that are required will be paid prior to connection. And then, the F is the manholes. Yeah, we have no problem with putting in manholes if the WPCA requires.
So, I'm going to hand out the response of the conservation.
So, I'll try to go through this one also very quickly. So, the staff from conservation asked, you know, is saying that the stormwater management design was done for twenty-five-year storm. Engineer should, should look into the fifty and the hundred-year events. Now, the town of Stratford only requires, literally only requires a twenty-five-year storm, but like I was explaining before, we're actually holding the whole volume, right? So, we kind of, by default, we don't necessarily exceed the fifty or a hundred-year storm by the volume method, but if you were to do this by like, say, what normally, these applications come in with a peak, where you try to maintain the before and after peaks, you would probably, that would actually require a smaller storage than we have here today. So, what I did is actually, I looked at the fifty and hundred-year storms. So, at the hundred-year storm, if this commission would want us to store for the hundred-year storm, the whole volume for the hundred-year storm, that would only require another one hundred and twenty-five lineal feet of gallery, which we have plenty of room for. And that would be added on to the eight hundred and ninety-six lineal feet that we already have. So, it's just a small incremental increase, and you'll, and I could say, we, we store up to the hundred-year storm. So, everything up to the hundred-year storm will be stored onsite with the initial one hundred and twenty-five. And that's to the, if the commission would like to see us store that much, I don't see an issue with that. The applicant should be, to ensure compliance with the MS four, which comes online on July first. Again, the DEP has given us all the, all the towns in the, in the state. It's basically to try to get us to increase water quality and try to reduce the amount of water that's being discharged out into the rivers and Long Island Sound. The towns basically around the Long Island Sound have already implemented a lot of these things. So, it's basically now that after we get our, our building up and approvals, they want us to justify that we actually met all those best management practices and that we have an O and M manual on file to maintain those things. So, this commission's been basically requiring those things for a very long time now. It's just that now, the state is mandating it to everybody in the state of Connecticut. The engineering design report indicates the stormwater will be directed to underground galleries. However, the site plan will show rain garden, is the rain garden design report? No. And the reason why is because I use the rain garden basically as a way to, to say, all right, I'm treating this water. It's, it's basically a way to clean the water. I don't take credit for the volume of it. I don't take credit for how much rain gardens actually take away from the, the amount of water that I would need. So, if I was to take credit for the rain garden, my galleries could be smaller, but I just say I want to be conservative, and I don't take the rain garden into account. I just use it as a, basically, a way to start off my treatment train. The maintenance plan should be provided for the concrete galleries. Again, with that requirement from the state from the MS four, prior to certificate of occupancy, we'd have to submit to the engineering department a O and M, which is an operations and maintenance manual, and that would have to be on file with whoever the property manager would be, so they can maintain everything. The commission should require, via permanent condition, a bond be placed for the, for two-year maintenance of the rain garden. We concur. While I understand the applicant desires. Okay, so here she talks about the Austrian pines that we're proposing around, and she's saying that the trees get big, and that we should consider them something smaller. Now, my response to that is we are open to revisions to the landscape plan. The intent is to establish a high screen for the neighbors and shade trees for the sidewalk. So, that's basically my, if any, there's any questions, but. And I also attached the calculations for the one hundred and fifty-year storms, and you could see that, right now, we have fourteen thousand cubic feet of storage. We only have to increase it to sixteen thousand, and then, we meet the hundred-year storm requirement.
Thank you, Manuel.
Thank you.
Before I forget, that fifty-four-foot height limit on the building on Ferry Boulevard is within the sixty-foot height limit that is allowed in a TOD zone under section 7.10 7K. So, we're not asking for something that exceeds the height limit. At this time, I'd like to introduce Garrett Bolella, civil engineer, traffic engineer from Frederick Clark Associates who did traffic study, and he will explain his findings to you at this point. Garrett?
I'm actually Mike Galante, principal of Frederick Clark Associates. Garrett is sitting behind me. He was here for the previous application some months ago. Yes?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I was getting to that. I am a principal of Frederick Clark Associates. I have my traffic engineer. I have forty-two years of experience. I've probably prepared thousands of traffic studies around the state of Connecticut and New York over, over that career. We prepared a traffic study originally for one hundred and thirty-three units. We now have an application for one hundred and nineteen units and a very small piece or portion of commercial space on the first floor. I'm going to just run through an overview, not to go through too many details, but, and I'm going to leave all these boards back with you. Just for reference purposes, the site is located on this corner. Here's Willow Avenue, Ferry Boulevard, and Bonham, which is the state route. Our traffic study focused on the intersection of Willow Avenue and East Broadway along Ferry Boulevard. The data obtained by our office was obtained for weekday mornings, weekday afternoon peak hours. We identified the peak hours, the typical seven-thirty, eight-thirty in the morning, and four-forty-five to five-forty-five in the afternoon, typical commuter peak hours, if you will. Volume of traffic on Ferry Boulevard is about eleven hundred vehicles, the highest being in the afternoon peak. Willow Avenue is about eighty, about sixty-five vehicles, two-way during the same peak hour. Sixty-five vehicles. East Broadway has a volume of about a hundred and forty vehicles, same one-hour period, a two-way volume. Just for reference purposes, Ferry Boulevard, of course, has the highest volume. All of these volumes were compared to DOT data. DOT actually approved these volumes as part of the development across the street, which we are, we're also, and still are, the traffic consultants on that development, and I'll bring you up to date on that in a minute because it's important to this whole area as far as roadway conditions. I'm not, I'm not going to go through the numbers in any more detail, but from the traffic study, these are the volumes by movements, for the intersections, and this is what we studied. A development of this type and size would generate about forty-five to fifty-five trips during a peak hour, forty-five being the morning peak, fifty-five trips during the afternoon peak. That's a two-way volume, so entering and exiting traffic. Traffic is added to the roadway system by the driveways served in this proposed development and analyzed as a before and after, you know, a no-build and a build condition to determine impact. Now, this area in this study area is somewhat unique because at the same time as we're doing this traffic study, the traffic conditions, traffic control out there today, as you know, and this is just for reference, here's the site in this map. This is a Connecticut DOT map, just for reference, and I believe it's actually in your file. There's a traffic signal at Willow Avenue today. There's a traffic signal at East Broadway today. They operate together under one, one traffic controller. Our report analyzed with the traffic signals and determined the impact of this development on the roadway system. At the same time, we are before, now before, the Connecticut DOT for an encroachment permit for across the street for that new development, which is a vacant office building, if you will, that will become a seventy-one-unit residential apartment development. As part of that review by DOT, and a little bit of a surprise during the process, actually last October, DOT said, great to that applicant, not tonight's applicant, but we don't want these traffic signals. We've made a determination that they're not needed. They're not warranted if I, from my put, and when I say not warranted, there's not enough volume coming out of the side enough volume coming out of the side streets to warrant the traffic signal. I'm sure those traffic signals have been there many, many, many years. We've analyzed it with and without a traffic signal. So we have both analyses. And in both cases, the intersections operate at acceptable levels of service, meaning the amount of delay that's there today with, without the development. And of course, our development on this corner is including the development across the street, so that traffic's put into the mix. As part of the modifications, which is the removal of traffic signals, and I could say that with confidence because two weeks ago, we had a meeting with DOT for the development across the street, and the traffic signals are coming out. And I think they would be coming out with or without these developments. And it's really part of a bigger picture of what DOT is doing in the area. And it's somewhat related to the I-95, the replacement of the bridge that was recently completed, and the ramps and so on. And there's some ramp changes that are included in our analyses of Ferry Boulevard. As part of the removal of traffic signals, the East Broadway approach to the intersection of Ferry is being redeveloped into a T-intersection. The extra pavement in this area, if you can see it by reference, is being removed by that applicant. New curb lines, new sidewalks, new landscaping. The new, their new building will look fur, will be set further back from the new edge of pavement because the edge of pavement's being moved out. As you go along Ferry Boulevard, along tonight's application, I hope, try not to confuse everyone, the pavement markings are changing. The crosswalks are being replaced. The appropriate signing is put in for crosswalks. The median, the nose of the median's being slightly modified. And that applicant across the street is responsible for all of this. Even though it was a DOT plan that they were going to be doing anyhow, his timing was not great, and it's now part of his encroachment permit to do those improvements. He will likely receive that permit within the next month, and he will, you know, of course, start work on his site. He has other issues with his site as far as cleanup and so on, but then he will provide these improvements as part of his development across the street. So tonight's application has the benefit of those modifications to the roadway system. So we incorporate that into our analyses, and this report actually has with and without those improvements, just for reference purposes. So in, in the end, this development generates 45, 55 trips during a peak hour. That amount of traffic added to this roadway system and these intersections with or without the traffic signals can operate at satisfactory conditions as far as measuring delay and levels of service. And I know you've heard levels of service from time to time. That's a quick summary, but in essence, these improvements are coming in regardless of tonight's application. Okay? And I can certainly answer questions now or later on.
Can you submit that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm going to submit, actually.
Just for a second. I'm, I am going to interject. Would you all like to ask questions while we have the traffic engineering now? This is the part that often gets more confusing, or would you rather wait until the end?
I'll wait till the end.
Yep, I'll be here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Exhibit 10 is a study done by Frank Dalvecchio, a licensed Connecticut real estate broker for 45 years, that concludes that the proposed use shall not adversely affect tax valuation of neighboring properties as a result of the proposed use. As you know, this is one of the issues you are to consider when dealing with special case applications pursuant to section 20.2.1, and Frank's report, which is exhibit 10, handles that issue. At this time, I'd like to discuss the administrative comments. The building department, fire department, and public works department had no comment on this application. Exhibit 11 is an email from Lieutenant Dave Gugliotti, the traffic officer for the Stratford Police Department to Dave, to Jay, dated December 8, 2016, in which Lieutenant Gugliotti states, "I was given the traffic access and impact study for 382 Ferry Boulevard," about which you have just heard testimony. "It appears to be in line with the DOT plans at the meeting I attended at the DOT. As long as crosswalk and signs are in place, after they remove the traffic signals, all appears good." Exhibit 12 is an email from Deputy Chief and Fire Marshal Brian Lampert to Jay, dated December 8, 2016, in which Chief Lampert states, "After reviewing the revised proposal for 382 Ferry Boulevard, I do not foresee any problems for emergency services to gain access and/or conduct business at this location. I will certainly address all safety features that pertain to the Connecticut Fire Safety Code and this development during the required plan review process." The health director, Andrea Bossevan, submitted three reports dated October 21, 2016, December 7, 2016, and June 18, 2017, to the effect that limited groundwater sampling was done in 2002 and did not indicate the presence of raymark waste onsite. However, she pointed out that the subject premises is located in an area of potentially contaminated groundwater where the EPA and the Connecticut DEEP have installed sub-slab ventilation systems on neighboring properties. Not on this property, on neighboring properties. The health director recommended that my client engage a Connecticut licensed environmental professional, so-called LEP, to ensure that site development is coordinated with the EPA, DEEP, and the town. She also recommended that a vapor intrusion system be proactively designed and installed for first-floor dwelling units on the property. In that regard, my client has engaged Mr. Michael Granata, a licensed environmental professional at Go Environmental, who will now address those concerns. Mike?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Some time ago, I was asked to conduct an investigation at the subject site for AAA when they were interested in developing that property. As part of that investigation, I installed monitoring wells, collected soil samples, and my findings showed that there was very little in groundwater contamination immediately beneath the site. However, there was some soil, shallow soil contamination, that could be dealt with as part of development, and that would entail sampling and disposing of that soil correctly. As attorney Knott mentioned, we are in OU2, operable, operable unit 2, which means that the groundwater is contaminated in that area because of Raymark Superfund Site. Having said that, the EPA recently finalized their Record of Decision in September 2016, which stated that virtually all new development in that OU2 should have sub-slab ventilation systems. And my client is willing to provide that, not, not because he's just willing to, but because that's going to be part of the law eventually. Right now, it's just something that we're going to be doing as part of this development. So with that, I see that the ventilation system, which acts similar to a radon system in a simpler sense, would be effective in protecting the health of the residents in this unit. So with that, if there's any questions, I certainly will be able to answer them for you.
By the way, an environmental, a so-called phase, thank you. This is Mike's report, which I'll submit. Within the context of the AAA application, an environmental site assessment, a so-called Phase 1, was done of the property to determine if it was an establishment within the definition of the Transfer Act. If it is an establishment, all kinds of stuff has got to be done vis-à-vis reporting with the DEEP before a piece of property can be transferred. It is not an establishment within the definition of the act. And secondly, there was a question as to whether there were any underground oil tanks on the property because there had been a house there at one point in time. The Quonset Hut was there. The question was, were there any underground tanks servicing the Quonset Hut? We did ground penetrating radar study when we were going through it for AAA, and there are no underground storage tanks on that site whatsoever. Finally, Jay Habansky submitted his comments dated December 5, 2016, in which he said the following. "In general, the project fulfills a majority of the components identified in section 7.10.1 of the zoning regulations concerning the purpose and intent of allowing for transit-oriented developments. The proposed use is permitted subject to approval of a special case application. This project will be the anchor TOD project for the Ferry Boulevard corridor and an important component to the economic vitality and viability of the downtown. The project should remove motor vehicles from the road by attracting residents to look better, to better utilize Stratford's accessibility to mass public transportation. By removing vehicular traffic, impacts on infrastructure and the environment will be mitigated. In addition, the potential residents of this development will support the local service in, and attract new businesses and development within the downtown." For the frontage, the surrounding TOD context is not nonexistent. So the proposed plan of five stories, considering the width of Ferry Boulevard, approximately frames, appropriately, rather, frames the streetscape. So the proposed plan of a five-story development, considering the width of Ferry Boulevard, appropriately frames the streetscape. Interior buildings B and C protrude into a block of one-to-two-story single-family dwellings, all of which are approximately two and a half stories in height. The height for buildings B and C is three stories, approximately 36 feet, and appears to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood context. Although not required, it is strongly encouraged to include some commercial use at this location to provide additional service to the existing residents and future tenants. As I indicated earlier, this application does show 1,245 square feet of retail space on the first floor along Ferry Boulevard. Now, as you know, Pat Rose, Manny Silva, Mike Granata have just described some of the details of the site plans as it relates to stormwater, landscaping, site lighting, and architectural modifications. They've also addressed issues raised by the town engineer, the conservation administrator, and the health director. Before I get into the special case approval criteria, which you are to consider in analyzing an application like this, I want to have Nick Owen come up here and address you with respect to his efforts to reach out to the neighborhood and discuss.
Thank you, Barry. Good evening, Madam Secretary, Madam Chairman, members of the zoning commission. My name is Nicholas Owen. I have business offices which are located at 972 East Broadway in Stratford, where we conduct a real estate land development building business, and we've been doing this for about 45 years. The prior testimony with all the technicalities gives me a headache, so I'm going to try to speak with you in plain English to try to give you an overview on how we got to where we got to appear before this good commission tonight. Mr. Posner, who is here, was kind enough a number of months ago to formulate a meeting with the residents and myself where we met. There were some 25 or 30 people there. It was a very lively meeting, as you can imagine. People were upset at the magnitude and density of the proposed development at that point in time. And what we did at that meeting is we tried to scale down the unit by way of meeting some type of compromise, which I felt we were able to do. When we appeared before the commission, we presented some of that compromise that we had agreed with, with some of the neighbors who were in opposition, and some of them were sullen and not mutinous, and some shook their heads and say, well, something's got to go there. Not that that something should be exactly what we originally proposed, but something that would be conducive to what is going to happen with that entire corridor over on, over on, over on the Boulevard. There is going to be a huge change coming in that corridor over the next several years with the installation of the ramps by the state of Connecticut. This commission is probably going to entertain a number of different petitions, some commercial in nature, some residential in nature, some TOD. Other TOD developments may come forth before this commission, and some professional office buildings may come forth. However, I want to thank the neighbors for their continued concern, and I mean that genuinely. And Mr. Posner, with respect to that, formulated a second meeting of the neighbors where we think we have come up with what we think is a reasonable plan from, by all parties. Now, there may be some opposition. They would certainly have an opportunity to come up and speak to it, but some of the neighbors are here, and I want to thank them for spending the time with us to come up with what you are looking at this evening. Now, Mr. Knott went over a quite lengthy presentation on what we did to try to satisfy all parties so people come away sullen and not mutinous. And that would be over the, that would be the aspect of eliminating the top two stories off the rear buildings, bringing them more in conformity with the homes that back up on Willow Street and Homestead. So we felt that we have made that. Now, it was also suggested, not only by the commission last time, very briefly, but also by the neighbors, that they were not opposed to raising another story on that front building. Now, your regulations allow you to do that. So what we have proposed this evening, as previously indicated, is raising that story, raising another story on that front building. And I would like to indicate to you, in your regulation, it allows us to go up to 60 feet on the Boulevard. We have not gone up 60 feet. I think it was indicated to you that it is 54 or 55 feet, so it's lower than what your regulation allows, with the back two buildings being substantially lower than that. Another concern by the neighbors is that they did not feel that there was enough vegetation, enough landscaping, so we doubled the landscaping on the interior of our property inside our setback lines against our vinyl fencing. There was also some concern that the landscaping that was going to be addressed and developed and planted on our property wasn't enough, and would we be willing, if the neighbors wanted, to plant some additional trees and shrubs to further block the development in the vinyl fencing? And we have agreed to that, and our plan this evening shows that. At the last hearing, to get to some of the more salient points, a, and I think it was Mr. Fuller, pointed out that the Transit District Zone is new to the town of Stratford in the past few years. In fact, the two projects that the zoning commission approved, and some of you people were on the boards at that time, were actually presented by attorney Knott and myself. And it was pointed out by Mr. Fuller, and rightfully so, when he pointed it out, that there was no commercial aspect to either of those. And I want you to hear that again. There was no commercial aspect to either of those. But I also want you to reflect in your mind's eye where 1111 Stratford Avenue is the Forest City Development. That is a highly developed section of Stratford Avenue. And within, literally, 12 to 15 or 20 steps of walking, you have every type of commercial business that you can possibly think of, including multiples of different types of restaurants, pizza huts, pizza bars, bars, drinking bars, nail salons, hair salons, diners. I'm sure you get the point now that I've made it. On the Christ Church site, I want you to think of your mind's eye where that is located. It is tucked in to a residential area where commercial development would not be conducive to that particular development because it's all, it's all surrounded by residential. It's residential all around. So when Mr. Fuller, Commissioner Fuller, states that there's no commercial development in the two that we, that we, that we have approved, we would like to see some commercial development. He's correct. Where I think he is incorrect, and I say that lightly, not to anger him, that you, you have to look at the specific location when you determine whether or not that the Transit District project that's being proposed is conducive to substantial or part commercial development. And I suggest to this good commission that Ferry Boulevard, in the location that we are talking about this evening, is a kind of a strange little section where two or three roads go off into different ways, and it's a fairly fast street, where substantial development- development on the first floor of that proposed development was probably not conducive to people shopping, buying coffee, buying donuts, buying bagels, getting their clothes cleaned, whatever type of establishment that you might think would go in there. And I want to point out to you, to this good commission, that within walking distance of this particular site, I mean literally five to six minutes walking, you're in Stratford Center, which starves for patrons to visit and spend money. On the Ferry Boulevard site itself, you've got the Blue Sky Diner. You have the Rotary Sports Center. You have the Rotary Shopping Center. You've got a hair salon. You have a beauty parlor. You have a liquor store. You have cleaners. You have just about every commercial facility there. So, to enhance or to develop the first, the entire first floor of the 382 Ferry Boulevard site as all commercial, retail, or professional, to me, doesn't make sense. Because what you're doing, if you really think about it, is you are taking away customers and clients from existing business, businesses that are close. However, in an effort to compromise, because the commission wanted to see something there, I agreed last time, and I certainly agree this time, and it is currently included in our plan, we will reserve 1,200 and some odd square feet on the corner of Ferry Boulevard and Willow Avenue for commercial or professional office space. Now, if you take a look at the plan, it shows one space that's 1,200 and some odd square feet. That actually consists of two residential units of 600-plus square feet apiece. We think that is enough to at least get started. And I also stated, and I will conform to this, that when that project is built, that all of the units will be rented. Those two spaces will be reserved for commercial space, be it retail space, be it a coffee shop, be it a lawyer's office, an accountant's office. We are more than willing to do that, to see if we can satisfy, and I don't want to use the term "spirit" in a, in a heavy sense, but the commission would like to see it. Although your regulations don't specifically state that is a, that it is a requirement, it's not a requirement. It's something that you would like to see. But you've got to keep in mind, developers, including ourself, do not build projects to keep them vacant. And there's enough vacant space in this town for the next three to five years. And what I don't want to see is a building that is complete, done, and unoccupied. And you've got to keep in mind that the commission doesn't necessarily look at a project economically, totally, but partially you need to look at the economics of a project. The town, whether my space is full or vacant, still gets their taxes, still gets their fees. We still have to pay the maintenance. We still have to pay the repairs. And to end up with vacant space is just adding to, adding to this vacant space that this town currently has. And we have a lot of commercial vacant space in this town, and we don't want to add to it. But I am willing to set, I am willing to set that aside. The neighbors were also concerned about, about the flow of traffic. We think that based on the testimony of our traffic engineers, and by the way, they not only work for us, they work for the state of Connecticut, and they were hired by us because they knew the area and because they worked for the state of Connecticut, and we were concerned that we wanted these developments to be cohesive with what was going on with the, with the new ramps that are going to be, be constructed. I would also like to state, and I know Barry's leaning over my shoulder, he wants me to shut up, but I want to talk just a little bit longer than he did, that this is a high-quality development. This is not your run-of-the-mill brick apartment building with vinyl windows and a flat roof. This is going to be one of the best-looking apartment complexes in this town. And we're proud of what we did, and we worked hard on it to get it this way. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I think Mr. Knott wants to conclude.
Do you have any questions, Madam Chairman?
No, I think Mr. Knott wants to conclude.
Man, a hot air department. The man gives me a run for his money. Holy mackerel. In other words, this is going to be a nice development, not like all the other developments that you build in town? All right. The approval criteria under Section 20.2.1 of the zoning regulations. The proposed use will be in conformance with all the requirements of the district in which it is located. As I indicated, TOD residential apartments is permitted in a commercial and residential zone. The location, size, and intensity shall be compatible and harmonious. Here, our proposed plan coverages, for coverage is just 33.1% of coverage where 40% is allowed. We are maintaining 28.6% open space. We are, where we are required to only maintain 15% open space. Certainly, the size and intensity of this proposal is compatible and harmonious with neighborhood development, especially given the existing commercial development along Willow Avenue and Ferry Boulevard. Three, the proposed use shall be in conformance with the town plan of development. Once again, the plan of development calls for TOD development in this area. The design, location, and details of the proposed use shall not adversely affect safety in the streets nor increase traffic congestion. You have already heard from our traffic engineer on this subject. Furthermore, all approaches will continue to operate at the same level of service and with minimal project delay during peak hours. The emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration shall not adversely affect land, water, or air quality. Here, the town health director has raised an issue regarding groundwater monitoring. My client has engaged an LEP who has investigated, and we have agreed to install the vapor intrusion system for first-floor dwelling units, and will engage the LEP that you heard from to work with the EPA, Connecticut DEEP, and the town in the development of this property consistent with the health director's request. The proposed use shall not adversely affect tax valuation of neighboring properties. As you can see from the architectural rendering of the exterior of the building, the structure is very attractive, well landscaped and presented. You've also received a report from Frank Delvecchio regarding the fact that there will be no adverse impact on tax valuation of neighboring properties. The proposed use will not create any police or fire hazards. As you can see from the administrative comments from the police and fire departments, they Exhibit 13 is a copy of an article from the Connecticut Post dealing with the house buying versus apartment rental propensity of our millennial generation. And that article, it indicates, "Young people are renting longer before investing in buying any sort of property, and they are putting off buying suburban homes longer than generations before them," according to long-term data published by Zillow. Millennials aren't buying single-family homes. They are looking more at townhouses or urban apartments. They want to come and go freely and not be bound by chores such as mowing the lawn, raking or leaves. They want their time to truly be their time. Many dislike long-term commitments, so renting fits into their preferred lifestyle, according to a Fairfield University finance professor. As you can see from this article and from the numerous professionals quoted therein, apartment living is here to stay, at least for a large segment of the population which previously had purchased homes. Finally, because the property is located within close proximity to the Houston River, this application was referred to the Stratford Waterfront and Harbor Management Commission for their review and comment. Exhibit 13 is a copy of a letter from the Harbor Management Commission dated June 26, 2017, in which the commission found that, quote, "It is not anticipated that the harbor management area will be significantly affected by this application, and therefore, the Harbor Management Commission has no objection to the proposal at this time." For all of the reasons articulated by me and my experts, I believe that this is a good application worthy of your approval. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Are you ready for questions? Mr. Knott, you ready for questions?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right. We'll start with Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Attorney Knott, Mr. Owen, members of the public, and your experts here tonight. First, I want to say, I do appreciate it when a petitioner actually listens, not just to a commission, but to a neighborhood. I'm definitely seeing more of a tapering off from Ferry Boulevard towards the back lot, not just in the size or height of the two rear buildings, but also the foliage and the tree lines you're looking to put in, that you're willing to stagger them out, too. I've worked in a nature conservatory for a couple, for over a year, Arboretum in Stamford, and the trees you're selecting are not cheap trees. These aren't the ones you just go to Home Depot and just pick up off the shelf. These are sturdy, built-to-last trees. Mr. Knott, feel free to bring up any expert you think would be most appropriate to answer my line of questions. I just be very careful about citing millennial home-buying trends first and foremost, because economics change, trends change. Just now, I pulled it up on my phone right here, Chicago Tribune. If you don't like their bias, I have Fox Business News also saying the same thing. Millennials are beginning to buy homes, though I imagine there's still a good degree of rentals going on. You have a very diversified housing market with late 20-year-olds and early 30-year-olds. This is my generation. I'm a homeowner. So, I would just be very careful about throwing out broad micro, I mean macroeconomic statistics because it's very easy to be proven wrong when you do that. It's making an assumption that millennials are not home buyers or do not have any income or have jobs, and I take deep umbrage of that. With that said, I also appreciate the fact that there are bike racks, there are benches and outdoor usage. That is not only encouraged by the TOD, it's also encouraged by our POCD to make Stratford a much more walkable, aesthetic place. My two major questions come from this. First, and a couple of questions, or like dovetail questions, follow-up questions to my major two. The first one, this is brought up in zoning comments from the zoning office. Section 7.10, parentheses 8A4, which is, talks to the exterior materials, particularly for Building A. It's discouraged to use that sort of material that you're proposing. Are you looking to, is there any way to enhance that, upgrade that, to make it much more?
Upgrade the exterior facade of the building?
Yes. Is there a willingness to do so?
Mr. Fuller, do you want to expound a little bit further what you might be looking at or looking for?
Yeah, so it's, if you'll take a look at the zoning comments, it would be TOD overlay district design guidelines. It's bullet point number three under section point 7.10, parentheses eight, parentheses A, parentheses four. External insulation and finish systems, EIPS, I mean, I'm sorry, EIFS, and vinyl, which has been selected for material for the exterior, is discouraged, and the applicant should choose a higher-end finished product, particularly for Building A, the frontage of Ferry Boulevard. But I'd also encourage that for all buildings, because you are going to have neighbors on the rear side as well for Buildings C and B.
Jay, thank you, Mr. Fuller. Jay and I had a very limited conversation with regard to that. And if you take a careful look at the rendering, which, by the way, we turned in that rendering last hearing, and we would like to continue to submit that as an exhibit for this hearing along with the plans that you have. If you take a look at the exterior of that building and you read some of the material comments, they are of the highest-grade material and some of the, some of the newest material on the market. Now, you could say that they are, well, they're vinyl. Yes, they are. But if you take a look at the sheiks, they look wood in nature. We have a lot of brick. We have a lot of stone. We have architectural shingles on the roof. We have some copper. So, we have taken into great consideration on what the exterior of these buildings, how they look, and what they will ultimately look like. Now, the reason why we did that and not use wood finishes is for maintenance purposes. We wanted these things to last as long as they possibly could without having any deterioration. So, I think that maybe we can agree that the quality that we use is going to be the highest-quality material. You can tell by the design of the building that this is going to be a quality building with quality products on it and in it, so it stays nice for a very long time. But I do understand his comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up.
Before you finish on that and that same comment, I want to give Mr. Urbanski a chance to just expand a little bit more on his thinking, just to dovetail in with Mr. Fuller's question. Mr. Urbanski?
I don't want to answer his question. No.
Well, it's not that I necessarily have a problem with how the design or the materials being inspected in the project. It's just my job to analyze what's being presented against the regulations that we have. The regulations say that EIFS, external insulation product, it's not encouraged, neither is vinyl. So, I think they did choose, they did offer a lot of high-end materials. I'm just calling out the fact that it's not an encouraged material.
We are.
There are, there are some potential alternatives.
I'm going to let Pat answer that.
Currently, the design does not have any EFS.
Oh, it was on the plans that were submitted. I believe it was called.
Yeah, it's on that, excuse me.
It's on the elevation, I believe.
It's on Architectural 201, that EIFS is there. I'm not a turn here. Excuse me, Madam Chair.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure Mr. Fuller's question is thoroughly vetted.
I was just saying, is that like right?
Yes, correct. It's way up high in the top gable where, anyway to see it, but.
It does call.
Certainly, certainly, everything else was removed, yeah.
But it does say on the elevations, A201, it is expecting EIFS.
Correct. Certainly can be changed to another material. Won't be EFS.
Mr. Fuller, did that answer your part of the question?
Partially. I have a couple of follow-ups. I have really two major questions, but some of them are follow-ups to those two major questions.
Continue.
I also serve on the Historic District Commission. We're wrestling with vinyl all the time. It's much more sensitive in an HDC than it is, say, in other parts of town. So, I'm pretty well aware of vinyl. There's definitely a spectrum of quality with vinyl. So, just to say something's vinyl is not necessarily good quality or bad quality. And vinyl 20 years ago is very different than vinyl now. You have some synthetic materials that do look the part, and you're not in the HDC. The HDC is about a five-minute walk from you, where vinyl is more discouraged. In fact, the Historic District Commission could actually deny applications because of vinyl, where I've never seen that happen, per se, on the zoning commission. But my follow-up question for, for the aesthetics of the building, would you be willing to take a look at some other materials or be willing to, to, I know Commissioner Giorgiano will probably have a couple more specific follow-up questions on that, so if you want to save the answer for that, that I certainly understand. My other question is, I'm very encouraged to see some first-floor activation for some sort of commercial use, and I understand why. You're not going with a full 100% commercial use because of economic calculations and what you think would move in the market and what would not move in the market. My question simply is this, is there a particular sort of use, retail, restaurant, office, that you're trying to market to, or is it just whatever tenant comes in is whatever comes in?
It's pretty much what the market will bear, and that just simply means whatever tenant comes in that's willing to pay the going rate on rent.
But are you looking to market to a particular niche or a particular industry or a particular use, or?
The problem, the problem, Mr. Fuller, is in that area, as I previously testified to. There is just about one and maybe two of everything. So, it's pretty difficult to attract something similar in nature or something entirely different. We have spoken on several occasions to, to tenants that wanted to open up a small diner, a sitting area for coffee and donuts, and then when they take a look around, they say, "Well, you know what? We don't, we don't think we can make any money here because we're such in close proximity to other establishments, similar or exactly in nature." But directly, no. We had, we don't have anything specifically in mind.
And my final question for now is, should you have that commercial space or professional office space on the market for a while, and it's just not moving? Is there a certain timeline you have in mind where eventually you might come back to the zoning commission? I certainly won't be here at that time. I just have five months left on my term. I certainly won't be here at that time. I just have five months left on my term. But I'm definitely counting. Is there a particular timeframe you have in mind for that, or is that still just too difficult to calculate now?
No, it's not. And I think I previously indicated in our prior hearing that I would be willing to go out two years. And if you can't rent it within a two-year period, it's just not going to happen.
Okay, and is that based mostly on, because you've developed properties, not just in Stratford, I imagine, but?
Well, quite honestly, I've sat on vacant office space and commercial space for some time up to five years during the downturn in the market. And there is still plenty of commercial space and office space that is available now in town since the downturn of the market. But I felt that two years was a reasonable period of time, and it's something that I thought would be acceptable to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Owen. I also just want to, again, just appreciate the fact that you are trying to make a compromise. A lot of developers, we've seen them on the board, just, they try to compromise and they just lop off a unit. My final comment is, I did some math while we were, some of the presentations were going on my calculator. At the current rate, and it's roughly 2.5 acres, give or take a couple hundreds of an acre. So at the current proposed site now, that's 47 units per acre. The previous plan was over 52 units per acre. So that's something, because when we talk about TOD, that's, we begin to look at it from that sort of number, units per acre. So this is lopping off five units per acre, which I think should also be noted for record as well. Thank you.
Actually, I did the exact math. You're close, it's 43.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I did the math, too. But you're close, you're doing pretty good. Anything else, Mr. Fuller?
Oh, no, that's it for now, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'm going to just go walk down the line here, just because we're all going to have something to say, I'm sure. Mr. Giuliano?
I'm going to pass for right now.
Okay, we can come back. Mr. Peppin, Ms. Peppin?
Yeah, I have a few things. First of all, I would like to commend you on getting together with the neighbors and coming up with, on several occasions, not just one occasion. I just have a few, I'll give you the good stuff first. I agree with Commissioner Fuller about the bike racks, the seating, the trees, the fire pit, all recreational items for the tenants. I have a slight problem with the height of that Building A to be five. Is there any building in town that is 54 feet high that you know of, any?
The Ramada Hotel on Orchard Boulevard, at least 60 feet high.
The Forest City Project on 1111 Stratford Avenue is 51.
Okay.
So there are other buildings of that height.
Similar to that, yeah.
Now, if I might, Ms. Peppin, the reason why we did that is based on some of the concerns in the neighborhood, that they really, I don't want to put words in their mouth if they want to speak about it, but I got the feeling based on conversations and really a slight direction from the commission, that, you know what, the regulation will allow you to do that. If you took off the two stories of the buildings in the back, the height on the first building would work. And it's, well, it's under your regulated area of 60 feet. So we did not go to the maximum.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Peppin?
Yeah.
Mr. Urbansky was just mentioning that that height probably is very similar to Tide Harbor off Elm Street.
Okay. You know, we kind of want more retail on that first floor, but I understand the circumstances. I think two years to hold that is enough. I agree with that. I would like to see more retail, but as stated, I kind of go with, you know, with the flow of what's going on in the neighborhood and whatever. Stormwater, I don't know, does it need to be 100? He said he would raise it to 100. Is that what he said, or?
That's the town engineer requested it.
Yeah, requested it.
That was per the town engineer, so.
Sidewalks are going to be, obviously, on Ferry Boulevard and along the side, too, or just Ferry Boulevard?
Yes. Let me address the first issue, and if I'm saying it wrong. The current town regulation from our engineering department says a 25-year capacity is, for a 25-year storm, is right, is fine. The Health Department took a look, I'm sorry, the Conservation Commission took a look at it, Tina Batag, and said, "We would like you at least to look at the calculations of a 50 to 100." As stated by Rosentizo, Mix Knox, if the commission felt that we should do 50, it will do 50. It's really not a major deal.
Okay.
And sidewalks, there are contiguous sidewalks around the proposed development and through and including up to Stratford Center.
Okay, okay. My other, my other comment is one that Jay had suggested about underground utilities.
I'm sorry?
Underground utilities.
Yes, there will be underground, yes.
Utilities.
Right.
Okay. I think that's all I have. But I do commend you for meeting with the tenant, with the surrounding houses and people.
Well, when you're met with a no, the only way to get to a yes is to get to a maybe first, and then we work from there.
Okay.
But they were, they were kind, they were cordial, there was no name-calling, and I think that this is, listen, I think it's going to be a great development, not only for that area, but for the town.
I mean, I agree. I go by there, as a teenager growing up, I worked there, okay? So I know the area.
Right.
I go by there, and I say to myself, "Lord, something needs to be done here." So I commend you on your progress with that development.
Thank you.
With that area. Thank you.
Before we go to the next, Mr. Urbansky wanted to follow up on one of your questions.
Just to clarify, in Section 3.24 of the zoning regulations regarding evaluation of the 50-100-year storm, I'll paraphrase, well, the project will essentially have to provide a zero increase in the peak rate of runoff from the site for a 25-year storm, which the applicant has done, with an evaluation of the impacts from a 50- and 100-year storm. So it doesn't have to be designed out.
Designed that way, just has to.
But they want to, we want to also be aware of what a 50- and 100-year storm might do to the development, which the applicant has done as well.
I did forget about the rain garden, too. I thought that was a good idea.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to commend you on the rain garden.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen, can you just answer, is it designed to a 50-year storm or a 25-year storm?
Manny Silva from Rosentizo. It's currently designed to a 25-year storm, but as I said in the response, there's an additional 125 lineal feet of gallery on top of the 890. It will, it will accept a 100-year storm. So it'll be essentially designed for the 100-year storm. So what I did was I, the plans that you see in front of you are designed for the 25-year storm. Adding another 125 lineal feet of gallery will then have it be designed for the 100-year storm.
Could you do that?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what we're going to do.
I would like, Ms. Peppin, just to follow up. And I want to make this clear, because I know it's a concern, and I've heard it before. Nick, if we approve you going 50 or 51 feet, that could put the commission in a situation where they have to approve 50 or 51 feet on another project. And I've also been told, well, Nick, you're probably going to come in, or Attorney Knott's probably going to come in and say, "Well, you set a precedent by approving one project for an additional story."
I would never.
Wait, you would never say that. Barry would never say that. And I would deny ever saying that either. However, the commission, as you well know, and I'm not preaching to the choir here, you know this, you can approve a project on one site with 51 feet or whatever conditions are allowable under your regulation that work for that specific site. It doesn't necessarily mean because you approved XYZ for Nick Owen or Barry Knott that you have to do it for Project ABC. So I want to be able to dispel that rumor. I don't think it's a precedent. I really don't. And your regulation allows up to 60.
Good, Ms. Peppin, okay?
I'm done, yeah.
Mr. Paul?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of points of clarification, mostly. First of all, I always felt that residents and developments like this need to coexist, so it's a commendable job.
No, I'm sorry. You're too close, I don't understand what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll back up and go slower for you. What I was saying with that, I always felt that developments like this and the residents around it have to coexist. And it's good to see how you got together with the residents to talk about the issues that were outstanding. Have a